Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to August 20th council meeting. All six of my colleagues, myself are here. Casey's here to keep us on the straight and there. And since I can't find it, we'll do department updates. I look around and I see John.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, bringing up today, the guys have been patching from the brush cutter. They got their chip seal done. Now they're starting to pave with pub. So, things have been moving along pretty good.
Ooh.
On the work. Federal aid, Old Thirty-One South, that's been completed. And we're gonna have file and final inspection on the fifth of September out there. It is looking pretty good. I mean, I think they've got everything squared away on it. And then Community Crossing Project, Brooks, they started today out there in Albinabi Township on 900 B's or West, between Olson Road and One Ten. So they're planning on doing the three north of Bruce Lake before Labor Day and then Bruce Lake after Labor Day. I should say Lex Bruce. You don't wanna call it Bruce Lake, you'll get in trouble. So those are going well. I've got two appropriations you'll see tonight. The first one's for ninety-four thousand from NVH to capital outlays, and that is for the backhoe, the purchase of it. We've got it. It's in service. Everything's great on it, but we gotta pay for it. So that's what the appropriation is for. And then the second one is for a hundred and ninety thousand, and this is to add extra funds to the Vituminous account. And that's for road projects such as oil, paint striping, and millings that we're purchasing from this E and B out there on fourteen. Paint striping is Old Thirty-One, north of town here. We chip sealed up to the river bridge. We're gonna stripe it, and then we're gonna grind off bumps on the north end of the bridge up to One Ten and then stripe it when we're done. So, uh, that's what that is. And then I wanted to talk to you about these buildings. Last, last month, I talked to you about the shop out the highway garage. Water's just running into it, and it is bad. And we talked about putting metal on it, and you guys approved that. We had a quote for that. Twenty-nine thousand five hundred to re-site that building. And despite what Pete thought, which he gave you, he was teasing me, but... I was going past the Inyers the other day, and I seen that building, and they're doing the same thing. They're metal siding it, but they foamed insulated it before they put the metal siding on. And I got to thinking, why aren't we doing that? That, that big old block building has no insulation at all. And now would be the perfect time to do that before we put the metal on. I talked to Brian, and Brian instantly agreed with me. He came out and looked at it. So we got insulation guys to come out and give us a quote to put insulation on before the metal. And it's gonna be between twenty and twenty-four thousand to foam insulate that. But it's also gonna add more expense to the metal guy to put the metal on if we do that because you... So to do it with just metal, you're putting one row of two-by-fours on and then fastening your metal to that. To foam it, you gotta bring that wall out a little bit to give you more space. So you put your two-by-fours and then you cross them, extend that out. You'd have about three inches there that you can foam. Well, you're looking at at least three hundred two-by-fours. You've got some trimming with the roof line and stuff. There's odds and ends that add up, and he said a good guesstimate would be add another twelve thousand to his expense.
So... Another twelve thousand to the twenty-nine-five?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. And he said that's probably high, but, you know, you gotta... There's gonna be expenses that we're not expecting. It's an old building. So it, it makes sense to do it, and now would be the time to do it. I hate to keep coming back and begging for money, but I hate to pass up an opportunity that maybe we oughta take advantage of at the same time.
And we had originally, when you approached us about the metal siding on the highway garage, we had originally approved that, said go for it, and we'd pay for it out a rainy day.
Correct.
Is that what I...
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So now the metal will be forty-one-five, and then you want the insulation. So another twenty-four ballpark, yes?
That's basically double.
So sixty-five-five total. Sixty-five. Ballpark.
Ballpark.
Gotcha.
And I, I hate to put a final, you know, it could be a little less. It could be...
Right, right.
A fudge more. I don't expect it to be lots and lots more, but it could be a thousand or so off.
Right.
Like I say, there's a lot of unexpected expenses.
But you're suggesting before the metal goes up, why not insulate the building?
Mm-hmm. You mean you lose? You would probably regain that money just in fuel savings for heating that building.
I would think.
If you had a bad enough winter, you'd probably get it back in one year. But I, I guarantee you four years, you'd pay for that in fuel savings. And Rick's here. He can tell you. It's an energy sucker. It just, it costs a lot to heat that. Because all you have is, I don't know, what is that, six, eight-inch block? Hollow block between you and the elements.
And, and, and the... So you'd already made arrangements for the metal siding to up this... The metal siding to up this year yet?
Yes. He's coming very soon to put the metal on regardless, because we've already approved that.
Okay. So we have to make, so you'd like for us to give you the black, or go ahead tonight so you can get a hold of the insulation guys so they can do their thing for the... Okay.
If you so desire.
Yes. I, I think it's a smart move to put the insulation up.
If we keep it out a rainy day, which to me, I think, makes sense. We still got, we got one point five plus in rainy days.
Rainy day is, we're flush in rainy day.
If we're gonna do it, I suggest keeping it rainy day.
I agree.
Because some of the other expenses we've got coming up.
I think it's a, I think it's a fine idea.
So anyone else? Questions?
Time to do it.
It's pointless to put siding on without insulating.
I, I compare. Do we need a motion?
You bet.
To prove it? If not, if, if there are no other discussion, anybody in public question?
Was the first, the metal siding, was that out of rainy day originally as well?
Yes.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve John's request to insulate.
I saw him move.
Brandon moved. Second?
House Senator.
Chief seconded. All in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you.
Get a hold of him.
Do that. This brings me to, the next thing I wanna discuss, which sounds like these buildings are falling apart. So we discussed also the salt building in Kiwanis, which is a very large building. We've got probably a year and a half, two years of salt stored in that building. We talked last time. I was gonna get a guy under contract for putting a new roof on that metal roof. This is a different contractor. And the plan was to do it maybe December or the first of next year, and I'd pay for it out of next year's budget. Because I budgeted for that, for next year, for in next year's budget. I don't have the money for it this year, but my point is, I went over there when it was raining here, what, a week, two weeks ago, a lot, and that roof is just leaking like a sieve. There's a hole in it about this big around in one spot. Salt's getting wet in places. I think it's a bad idea to wait until next year. Again, I don't have the funds for that.
What you'd like for the roof to be?
I, I think it'd be a wise investment to save your building before it falls in.
Right. And to save the cost of the salt you've got sitting in there.
Can the contractor do it?
He said, I talked to him. He said he could get on it in October.
We take an IOU until January?
You're sure he will eat?
I bet he will.
He's got sixty-eight, saved his cash. Just be hard to get a hold of for forty-five days.
Yeah, that's no kidding. So...
And you had money budgeted next year for the roof?
I did. Now, there's...
And that was about how much, remind me?
I think I budgeted forty-one thousand, and this comes to, I think, forty-two-nine.
Okay.
But I've also got, to be honest with you, there's other things over there that need repair. Building needs siding. It needs some concrete work done on the sides. But I could, I could take that money budgeted for the roof.
Yep.
If, if we could find another way to pay for the roof now, the money I have budgeted, I could spend it on those expenses next year and not bother you next year with that.
And, and then further extend the life of the building?
Tremendously.
Okay.
These are long-term investments.
You betcha.
Comments, anybody?
I, I don't know how he cannot...
What do you do?
Not do it. We have to take care of the buildings.
You got a large investment in salt that's getting wet. I mean, what do you do?
That is no brainer.
I have a suggestion, and I think very good suggestion, that we take this money out of COOM cap. Five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in COOM cap. Since this is a capital expenditure, we could take it out there. And based on what other COOM cap items are already spoken for, it'd be a good place to take it out of, so...
And we have funds remaining?
Yes.
In COOM cap?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is my suggestion. Again, it's not my suggestion, but it was suggested to me, so... I will entertain a motion unless someone's got, that we approve that out of COOM cap.
And have the roof put on this year?
Yes. All right, Steve made both prove?
House Senator.
Laurie seconded. All in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you very much.
You're gonna be busy with these buildings this fall, aren't you?
I think so.
Good.
I think it's a wise decision.
Yep.
You know, like I say, they're long-term.
Well, and it'll extend the life of the buildings.
We need a, we've all talked about it before. We need a new shop out there. Now's not the time. I mean, financially, we all know that. Spies us more time. And even if you do build another shop, that building will be there and you can still utilize it.
So it's win-win.
Yep. Maybe you wouldn't have to build as big of a new shop.
Good deal.
Any questions for John?
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Krista, do you have anything?
Oh, Krista's not here, but I can tell you what she said last night. I don't know how official I am, but...
Can I, can I make an announcement first?
Oh, there she is. Or there he is.
I don't know if you guys know it or not, but Brittany is gonna be our new nine-one-one director.
She, she was appointed last night. She will start when, September ninth, I believe it is officially.
So, but she did get appointed last night. Dawn got appointed to the EMA director position last night. So, and Dawn...
Congratulations, ladies.
And I think Dawn officially started today as her new job. Is that correct?
I did.
Yes. Yep. So, okay, now you can go on.
Do you want me to give the update, or?
You're more than welcome.
Well, I haven't officially started yet. I don't even have keys to the office, but the only update was that their newest dispatcher finished EMD training, so she's up to date. And then, secondly, Krista said she printed a bunch of apps for me to go through, and I get official on the night to hire the open position that I have. That was it.
That was at September again, please?
September ninth.
Thank you. All right, Dawn?
Well, I'm looking for my notes. Sorry about that. I'll try to wean it a little bit here and just off of what I know. But as you see, Amy and I got in here a little bit late. We've been over at Warsaw looking at their facilities, talking to them about their heating and cooling, and I'll let her catch you up a little bit more from that. It was a good process. One of the things that'll concern you guys and down the road is I did get their budget. So we'll be passing that around to everybody, and, and I sit on the HOPE committee now with Amy and them. So I'm already wearing multiple hats for you guys on account. So I'll keep that up as much as I can. The only thing concerning as far as my financials and my budgets is something I passed on to the commissioners. I'll pass on to you guys. I had a contract that I was handed down, kind of sort of, that was actually backed from Larry Hoover, was worked through with Craig when Craig was still deputy. It's for a system called Everbridge. I was trying to get rid of it because it's not utilized to its full potential. After talking with Rochester PD, everybody at county, and the fact that I can't cancel it because it takes a thirty-day notice, it's in my budget. I will cover it this year, and we're gonna try to utilize it and see if it's something we wanna keep in twenty-five. So as far as my budget goes. Tomorrow, there's LEPC is doing the lunch and learn for the corporate tier twos in the county. You guys are more than welcome to come. It'd be great. So it'll be at the fairgrounds from eleven to twelve-thirty tomorrow. And always having a helicopter landing training that we'll be going to tomorrow evening. And Thursday or Friday right now, or you know what? The only other thing is we are involved, EMA volunteers with the parade at the end of the month here. I will be utilizing the volunteers there. Me moving into this position now obviously leaves the deputy director position open. So we'll be crossing those Ts and dotting those Ds eventually with the deputy director's position, so... Did I forget anything from those that were here last night? Because I'm literally weaning it off of... Okay?
Can I ask a quick question? What is Everbridge? What's the purpose of it?
Everbridge is to notify public service of emergencies and such in the county. It's, what I've found so far in going through it, it's not hugely user-friendly. So, and I have talked to Rochester PD, and they, they're wanting to look at something too. So they're gonna come out. We're gonna bring Everbridge out, get us up to par on it, see if it's something we're gonna utilize and keep, but we have to keep it this next year.
Are we still using Nixle or any other service?
It's a replacement for Nixle. I think that went out and this replaced it.
Okay. That was before my time, so... But Highway Department does use it too as far as Everbridge system. So it's a system that's utilized and can be utilized, but am I not incorrect in saying it's not a user-friendly program?
What, what program, when the sheriff's office sends out their weather alerts, is that through that program? Or is that completely different?
Completely different, and I don't know what, what they're using.
I'm not having a central meeting, so...
Amy, Amy, you want to discuss?
Yeah. So, so grateful to Dawn and Pastor Meyer who came to Warsaw today. So we are, we were asked by Gail and others to research a heating and cooling station to be able to address individuals who may need those services that are homeless. And so we've been doing lots of research and trying to figure out what to do. And Fellowship Missions was the model that we felt like made the most sense. And so we've had two teams go there. We've had one team with the leadership team, and then today Dawn and Pastor Meyer. And so we've got the best practices and preliminary budgets and such. So this is something that Trent has asked us to do, to put a temporary shelter together. In the meantime, while they're working on a long-term project for homelessness and a shelter, permanent shelter. So that was, I think, very helpful for us to get more data and to have others see it. So we will circle back around probably in mid-September to bring the full team, including pastors. The hope is that the church community who has signed up to be a part of the team will carry the weight for the current volunteer situation. And so much work needs to be done, but we think that we've got enough planning done and we can actually get to just work and make it happen because the winter will be here before we know it. So that's pretty neat. As well as tomorrow morning, I do not know the time, but I sit on the Beeman Home Board in Cosiasko County. And I was informed on Friday of this last week that they are putting somebody here. So we have been working, I've been working with Commissioner Ranstad and Summers to be able to talk about, and Kathy to talk about more permanent placage of someone who is dealing with, who can provide services dealing with domestic violence. We can't move fast enough on that, and the need is very great. So they have, they will be loaning us one of their employees every other week. I believe on Wednesdays, starting tomorrow. So this individual will be housed here in Fulton County. I've already talked to Chief Schott about that to let him know, and the prosecutor's office as well. And so that person will be sitting at Recovery Cafe, available to help in whatever situation needs to be helped with for services. So it's neat that they're doing that for us, even though it's not ideal and not perfect in what we wanted, but it's something to fill the gap and so we can get services taken care of, so...
So let me get this straight, Amy, if I'm thinking right. Okay, so somebody comes to you and says, hey, you know, I've been battered. We're, we're gonna get help. You send them up there to talk to this woman, this lady, and then she'll get them help?
Yep.
Or point them in the right direction?
So she'll do the intake and understand what the need is. If there's a situation that is very dangerous, then they would probably try to find transportation to get her to the Beeman Home as quickly as possible so that she's out of danger. If it's just something that maybe is outpatient services, they will figure out how to, how to do those activities.
And the Beeman Home in Warsaw will take Fulton County patients because they are connected with Fulton County.
So, yes. So one of the things that the, that they, the board had actually been remiss on is that they really do, per their mission, cover Marshall County, Fulton County, and Cosiasko. And they had really not been able to do the outreach in Marshall and Fulton County as they had wanted to. So they asked someone from Fulton County to sit on the board as well as Marshall County, trying to understand the needs. So we've been advocating for that here, and so, yeah, so anybody...
That'd be great to get the word out.
Yeah. And we'll be on the, I believe that the new interim director has us on the radio on August thirtieth because that's when she'll have the final details of everything. We'll be able to say, we're giving Recovery Cafe a chance to host us, to see if that works out. But we're not a hundred percent sure if that's the right place or not. So we're not gonna make the, the location permanent until we feel like we've got a settled place for her for every other week, so... But that will be determined on August thirtieth. We'll make sure that we get that out, so...
Amy? Well, she's at Recovery Cafe. Are they giving her a office, a private?
They said that they, that's what, so, yeah. So Pat has offered, stating, we, we're on a Zoom call with him, that he does have a private office that is unused because she also needed access to printers and telephone, and I can't remember the other services that she needed, and Pat said he had them. And so she is showing it tomorrow. She'll be then at the service provider meeting for Fulton County HOPE has service provider meeting tomorrow, free lunch, eleven-thirty at the library, all welcome. But she'll be there to meet all the other individuals and to welcome her to the community. And if indeed it doesn't work out, she says that it's not the right place, then Fulton County hopes fully committed to help find her the right place. But we want to give Pat a chance since he's requested that he have her there. They have, I guess, some Thursday evenings as lady night, ladies night. And they wanted to provide some domestic violence training to their residents or to their members, excuse me. And so he'd asked if that could be something I could do, so... So it's not, you know, it's not exactly all settled, but at least it's in the right direction to provide services, so... Amy knows, like I said, I haven't seen Sheriff Sanders, but I think he's out of town, so I haven't told him to, yeah, that that's the case, but, yeah. They'll be, she will be available to provide services, so...
Thank you. Any questions, Trent?
Nope.
None.
Nothing for you?
Nope.
Next then, we will move on to minutes. And I have a question.
Okay.
I, I've got four minutes here.
Yes.
But I only have, that I find, unless I put it somewhere that I can't find, which is highly possible, that they, do you have four sent out?
So...
Because everyone will have had a chance to read.
So I think that we're looking at the July sixteenth council budget meeting?
Yes.
July sixteenth budget presentation meeting?
Got it.
And July twenty-third budget presentation meeting.
Okay.
And when?
Does the thirteenth been sent out?
Is that?
August the thirteenth?
Yeah, that's this one. Well, that's poor because I hadn't emailed. People haven't had a chance to read it.
I haven't seen it.
So, I should do it that way, because...
Okay.
Stop for a minute and get Jerry?
Sure.
Jerry?
Yes, good afternoon. I love you.
We're about to do, we're about to do, move on.
Oh, thanks. Sorry, I was a little bit drawn today. Had several things come up and... I'll get my information here real quick. Is everybody doing okay today? That's good. And we're all moving around and... Let's see here. Okay, here we go. Just wanted to give you an update on Fulton County, and we've encountered another death affecting additionally yesterday. So so far for 2024, we've had ninety-eight people pass away here in the county. That would be fifty-two females and forty-six males. Our death rate is down, which is a good thing. It's down exponentially. But I will tell you our coroners, if you will, that meeting the needs of the families is still right there at about thirty-six to thirty-seven percent. So we've had thirty-six cases out of the ninety-seven that have occurred here in the county. I will tell you one thing that's kind of interesting that I didn't mention last night. We've only had thirty-six calls that have been, we've had like thirteen autopsies, which is kind of unusual. That's more like what we might have for the whole year. But, so that's approximately one-third of the families we've served have required like an autopsy for varying reasons. We did have the one carryover from last year as well that occurred last June. And so we have that to add in on our totals, so I hope I don't have to come and request any additional funding for the autopsy fund, but I wanted to let you know that. So we've been very busy with that. Also, we've had many toxicology. I don't have the raw values tonight, but we have had many of those, and then a few labs that are done out at Woodline Hospital as well. So I wanted to let you know that. Let's see. And of our thirty-six coroner's calls, twenty-two are males and fourteen are females. In a couple of weeks, or I guess I should say the twenty-seventh of September, our Coroner's State Training Board will be... Training Board will be activated and meeting, and we're going to be discussing what happened back at our educational event back in June, how to improve strong points and things like that. So I'm excited to go down and be a part of that, too. Tomorrow, we have Lunch and Learn with LEPC and maybe, maybe you said something about that, too, Dawn. But anyway, it's very exciting. We've got a lot of new Tier Two partners that are coming on board and they're at least inquiring to come and meet everybody. And Tony Passarisi, the chief of the Kiwanah Fire Department, he's amazing. He's heading that, he's orchestrated it. So we're looking forward. We're going to have two people from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security come up from Indianapolis to present. So it'll be excellent. So we're looking forward to that. I know Steve's going to be there. And if anybody else wants to come, just let us know and I'll let Tony know tonight. So that's a big event coming up. We got the Rochester Parade and that's something that hasn't been on tap for a few years. So we've been doing all the parades this year, kind of showing off the vehicle. We're very, very proud of that. I've got to tell you, I'm so grateful and for instance, like this afternoon, I had a person come in from another county, just very appreciative of how beautiful our facility was, and they said it's one of the nicest they'd seen. And you guys know I'm busting my buttons and very thankful and I'm so grateful for that. And I won't, I'll probably tell you that a few more times, but you don't know how I feel and I feel like our county has come a big, long way and we're providing the very best for our loved ones, a place to rest, a privacy and like that. So I wanted to let you know that, too. And we get compliments a lot and it just makes my whole week. So I could tell you about our, our birth's in Fulton County, but I won't because a lot of people heard that last night. Our birth rate is up. Jillian's not even here tonight. I wonder if she's at the maternity oasis. She could be. All right, anyway, I thank you so much and I'm grateful that you allowed me to talk. Sorry I was a little bit tardy, but I was actually on the phone with a doctor about a pathology case that they, the pathologist would like to talk to him directly. So it took a little bit longer than I thought. So thank you so very much.
Thanks, Jared.
Okay, we have a little minutes. We've got three sets of minutes here. First one was our budget hearing from July 16th. Did everyone have a chance to go over that? If that's, any changes, I will entertain a motion to accept them as written.
So moved? I'll second it.
What's your name? Phil. I've had a tough day. Lori seconded, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Sign, pass it on. Next one is our regular council meeting on July 16th. I do have one correction. On my copy, it shows Wednesday, July 16th, and it should be Tuesday. So any other corrections or additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our regular scheduled meeting on the 16th of July. Pete moved to approve, second. Steve seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. And lastly, was our budget on Tuesday, July 23rd, where we finished up all of our budget hearings. So any changes or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as read.
So moved?
Pete moved in, Phil seconded.
There you go.
All in favor? Seven zero, thank you very much. Next, we have some additional appropriations. Actually, let's change it. Let's go to transfers first and then we'll go to additional appropriations. Transfers, first one is 2503 from Free Trial Diversion to the prosecutor's office. Computer software maintenance, $3,809.61. Transfer to Extra Help, $3,009.61 to OASDI, $500. Entertainer motion to approve the transfer?
So moved?
Bill moved to approve, second, Chase seconded, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Next one was some of the host fee, county council. We're moving this from contract, $111,585.48 to equipment, $111,585.48 to pay for equipment purchased for the Parkview ambulance service. Any questions? Entertainer motion to approve?
Tim moved.
Randy moved, Steve seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. This is from the Health Department. Transfer from Health Department Liaison, $17,466. Transfer to Public Outreach Supplies, $12,466. Contractual Services, $5,000. Moving funds to appropriate account number to pay for supplies and services. And the note that Denise put on here says this is for documentation purposes, so I know where to transfer from. The state has already approved the movement. So I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer. Pete moved, he's seconded.
I'll second.
Lori seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. And the last transfer is from County General. Office Supplies, $5,500 to billing and other insurances, $5,500. Transfer to paid Woodline PCP contract, presenting two separate transfers so bill is paid on time and the rest of the money is to be used for upcoming bills that are due. What's PCP contract, Rick?
Say that again? I was dreaming, what?
What's the PCP contract?
For what, what department?
Woodline?
Primary care.
Primary care, yeah.
Okay, all right. I just thought I'd ask. I'll, are there any questions? Other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved?
Bill moved to approve, Steve seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. Now we've got additional appropriations. This from Coomcap. This is for the auditor, financial and taxing annual payment of $18,857. Coomcap Development Fund was reduced by DLGF and the auditor took the full reduction. An appropriation is needed now for the financing, tax, and payroll software maintenance payment. Any questions?
What does that really mean?
Well, that's a good question, Chase, very good question. I'm assuming that the auditor took, when Coomcap was reduced by the DLGF, the auditor took it out of her budget, which left her short $18,800 to pay for the financing and payroll software maintenance payment. That's, that's as I read it. Is that true? Can you help us?
Sounds correct.
I told you, you're going to get arrows here on that.
We're on your right.
Is that what it is? I guess I could have asked you, I'm sorry.
Your right.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the additional appropriation?
So moved.
Lori moved to approve, second. Phil seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. Sign and pass it down. Secondly. And these are both with the Highway Department. The first one is out of 1176 for equipments, $84,000. It's to appropriate the funds for the new backhoe. And also this is from 1176 for highway maintenance is $190,000. For bidemis and next agri, additional funds requested for fund road programs such as chip and seal and pug. For a total of $284,000, all out of 1176. Any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve. Steve motion to approve, second. Chase, was that approved?
Sure.
I saw your hand bouncing, I'm sorry. Chase seconded, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you very much. So we will go on to old business. Pete?
Yeah, real quick. Last Friday, Kiwanah had the groundbreaking ceremony for their new water treatment plant that they used some ARPA money and got the federal funding to be able to afford that project. Nice servant, or ceremony, not servant. And I got invited and by default, I was the county representative, so I had to partake of it. But it was, it was nice to see the community, that project come to fruition for them and get started.
So it was well attended?
Yeah, there were several people from the community there. I know Michael Lauter, Bedco and a lot of the contractors that were part of it, but I intended to be just a spectator, but by default, I was a participant.
You got your picture in the paper, anyway. Thank you for going and yes, that was a very worthwhile opportunity to help Kiwanah.
That community was able to afford something that never would have happened without.
And glad we could help out. That, we got the art fund.
The art for funds and then those people taking that art for money and turning it into a massive grant to be able to afford that was, it was great to see something like that for a little community.
Yes, it was.
Good.
Randy?
No, I didn't have any.
Chase?
No, sir.
Lori? Steve? Phil?
Yep.
I don't have anything, Casey. Anybody in the audience, old business? That's Case, we'll move on to new business. Pete?
Yes. At our last job classification committee, something came to our attention that we wanted to address. There's currently a supplemental being paid to a dispatcher for quality queuing of medical calls. And currently, when Parkview became our ambulance provider, 911 medical calls are now being transferred to Parkview. So basically that job doesn't exist. There's no longer a need to queue the medical calls at the 911 center. So I guess I'm questioning the need to pay someone extra to do the job that's no longer being done.
And you're talking about that requirement is not needed as of now?
Correct.
And the rest of the year or beginning in '25?
It's, well, it hasn't been needed since Parkview took over.
Okay.
As the ambulance service.
Okay.
It's the way I understand it. Once Parkview decided they were going to request medical calls be transferred to their dispatch center.
Okay.
Our dispatchers no longer take them.
Okay.
So no one has to queue the calls and make sure protocols were followed.
Should be paid and done.
That's, I mean, I mean, I'm not picking on anybody, but we're paying somebody that, we're paying someone extra for something that's not currently being done.
And, and you're, how can I say, confident that someone is receiving payment for? Okay.
We talked about it that day. I was asked to bring it up at the next council meeting because the way I understood it, yes, someone is being paid.
Brittany's got to comment if you guys are okay with it.
So I think it's super important that we keep the money there. I don't think anyone's name has to be on it because we have purchased priority dispatch police and fire, which they'll have to be a queue school for that.
Right.
Does someone specific need it right now? No. However, once I get into office, it's going to be important to me to hopefully get that queue to possibly go to Parkview and still be active in queuing calls because it's at the top of my list with the commissioner's permission and with Parkview to get those medical calls back into our center. Something I'm really passionate about, so.
Yeah, I don't feel like we need to take the money out of the salary because I just feel like for the time being at least, the job isn't required to be done, so we shouldn't be paying someone extra to do it.
I agree. But don't take it away. Debris.
That was one of her goals when we interviewed her, that her, her main mission was to get the calls back because anytime you transfer calls, it takes time, as she will tell you. I think, I think we was in a EMS meeting the other day and they said it was a minute 12 or something that it took to transfer from, from time their dispatchers take them to transfer them over there. So, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot, but when you've got, somebody's having a heart attack or dying or something, a minute's a big deal. So that was one of her goals, that she would like to, to get that back, earn their trust and get it back, so.
And it also goes for canceled calls, too. I mean, it takes some, some time to relay that information to the EMS.
Exactly.
And then stop, you know, drive it past, essentially.
Yes, and I will make an amatory that those dispatchers stay on the phone for medical calls and that's where it's going to kind of area is if a call drops and someone does take over that call to continue with priority dispatch, will it be a queue there? Possibly, but as of right now, with the medics, medical calls being gone.
I'm talking about the future. I'm talking about we are currently paying someone extra money to do a job that's not required. Basically, we're paying them to, for nothing. They're not doing, the job's not required. I'm not saying this person isn't doing their duties. The duty isn't there right now, but the money still is. If I'm explaining it clearly enough, I hope.
No, that's very good. Any other comments? Public? Wes?
Wouldn't, I guess, wouldn't all dispatchers be queuing up medical calls prior to Parkview? I guess I'm confused why it was just one person.
It'd take special training, I believe, to do that.
Yeah, you have to go to priority dispatch, quality insurance school requires a pretty elusive test.
We're not talking about answering the phone.
Oh, right.
No, it's just there is a supplemental to do this for the certification to do this and I'm not wanting to take it away out of the salary ordinance. I'm wanting to suspend the pay because currently no one is doing that.
And that conversation needs to have, be had before September 9th.
Rick, can you do that?
Yeah, Rick.
Can the commissioners talk to Krista about just making sure that's not being added to the pay or something?
Well, BHR would have to check and see who's getting it and if that's what you guys, I would, I would think you wouldn't even take a counsel, counsel decision, to tell you the truth, if, if you're not.
You're saying would not?
I wouldn't think so, would you?
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would be. I think all you do is.
This is a two next split, a department head does is turning the payroll and they're approving it, so that department needs to take care of it.
I think I'll call Christina Haas and, and say, hey, if somebody's getting it, why?
Yeah.
You know, if they shouldn't be for this time being, so.
I agree.
Because she's a payroll, she's HR payroll.
That's not us. That's not us. Now, what's, what's stated on the salary ordinance is us.
Yeah.
But, but she don't want that pulled off the salary ordinance in case she ever needs to use it.
Right.
And that ought to be, you know, the director approved that this one's went through the school, then it turned them into HR. It shouldn't even go through me or you either once, should go through HR to prove, you know what I'm saying.
Hey, don't shoot the messenger. I was told to bring this up in new business.
No, that's great. Glad you did. Fourth discussion.
I will check in on that for you.
Thank you. Anything else, Pete?
No, that's enough. I ran about long enough.
Randy?
No.
Chase?
No.
Lori?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Steve?
No.
I do-
Phil? I know you do.
The county's portion of the host fee collections for April and May this year totaled $84,576.86.
That's great.
Yep, that's all I have.
Have you got a total for that?
That's April and May.
No, total, what's in it? The host fee fund?
Yes. Oh, what's in the host fee?
Yeah.
Do you want to know?
Yeah, if you don't mind, please.
If I can find it real quick.
I think it's on the last page. Last page. I think it's 28.
How much?
I'm going to guess 28.
I can't think of the number.
And you guys are taking $100,000, $100,000 a month out, out of that to pay the Parkview hospital, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
$800,000 the rest of this year. That covers the ambulance debt, or over the art funds for the ambulance, and $100,000 a month. And then we'll have to start next year, some of it as well.
Have you got the claims for the ambulances yet? You, you already have, right?
Yes, we've got the MN, and majority of them have been paid.
Okay.
What'd you do with it, Phil?
That's all right, if you can't find it. I can bug Kathy tomorrow, the next day forward, she'll give it to me.
Remember the number. 2.6.
Okay, good deal. Okay.
Now, that's before the major expenses have come out.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And that is as of July 31st.
Thank you.
So, six, eight, and plus another, some extra expenses on the ambulance with lawyers and that.
Yep.
And then after, well, it'll be the first year until we know what lift income we'll have from that, so what we need to-
You start getting that in January?
It starts in October. We're hoping to know some, we don't know how much. We don't know what the numbers will be. So, at least give us three months of, so we know what the numbers will be to start the year with.
Okay, okay. You actually start getting it October this year?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It starts coming out of your wages first.
Yeah, that, that way, we got till January 1, then we can start, after we get our distribution in January, then we know where we stand monthly as to what our income would be.
Okay.
So, I have, and Casey, any business, anyone else? If that's the case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Chase moved to adjourn, Lori seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much.